September 8th, 2021, special meeting of the Planning Commission is called to order at 7:05 PM. We will take a moment for silent prayer or meditation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Commissioner Williams. Paulina, can you call role?
Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Gutierrez. Commissioner Heng.
Here.
Vice Chair Lewis.
Here.
Chair Becerra.
Oral communications, this is a time when a member of the public may speak to the Commission on any matter within the scope of duties assigned to the Commission relating to non-agendized or consent calendar items. Other matters included in this agenda may be addressed when that item is under consideration. For all oral communications, the chairperson may impose reasonable limitations on public comments to assure an orderly and timely meeting. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the Planning Commission and staff's ability to respond to public comments at this meeting. Thus, your comments may be agendized for a future meeting or referred to staff at the com-- oh, at to staff. The Commission may ask questions for clarifications if desired at this time. By policy of the Commission, oral communications at this time on the agenda is limited to a total of 15 minutes. Persons who are not afforded the opportunity to speak at this time may do so under continuation of oral communications later on the agenda. Tonight, we have one public hearing. Paulina, who will present the staff report?
Madam Chair, we should ask for any general public comments at this time.
Sure. Does anyone have any general public comments that aren't on the agenda?
So, my question is whether or not Gavin Newsom is a yes vote. I would really think twice about that because Larry A. Elder is going to whip his ass and we're going to have a new governor. These people are tired of losing their jobs. And this motion tonight on the oral communication deals with a public hearing regarding, you know, particular businesses. So whether or not they're true, well, we'll find out because zone change 21-01, Chapter 26 of zoning, Section 26 through 597-280 regarding SC, not a service cunt, but a service commercial auto plaza business called a BID or BID. What's interesting was the survey followed a sequence through Thousand Oaks, Cerritos, and Industry. Now, like a place like West Covina, we're far from Thousand Oaks because old white motherfuckers have it all. And as far as Cerritos, oh, they're in between because I've met the mayor there before. He was a jackass. As far as industry, they have their meetings in the morning and it's really rude because most of us can't attend those meetings and weigh in on our opinion. And that includes Punta Hills Auto. And then regarding the presence of this maintenance that we're trying to speak about here, you know, what's interesting is that if you dial 925 area code, 5961222, we'll find out that that area code is far from West Covina or anywhere near West Covina or anywhere near Los Angeles County. But who would ever know that, right? El Salis doesn't know her left foot from her right foot. That's why she's always tripping on that COVID shit. And then regarding attachments number four in your Planning Commission agenda for this one item, regarding that policy 21, I'm not too clear on it. And I think the public should have more time to weigh in on that. As far as 2.4 with the residents, most residents can't engage in an auto, an auto business, an auto plaza business because, you know, they've never been taken for by a greedy selfish auto business owner. Usually, most of them own most of the autos, car places within their little area. There are maybe about, maybe five of them. I recall when I was up in Punta Hills and they tried to fuck me over for $1,500 to replace something that didn't need to be replaced. You know, I reported them. It was a good thing I reported them because not only did I get my money back, but now they got a strike against them for trying to be corrupted and criminal under your regulations of plum or your sequel regulations. You know, don't tell a customer, oh, yeah, we can fix it. Then you spend a whole day with the cars sitting on their lot, then the dumb motherfuckers don't come out and call you to tell you, hey--
Sir, can you please keep your language respectful?
Pardon me, ma'am?
Can you please keep your language respectful?
Well, my language is, is not the median of what I'm discussing. The median, what I'm discussing is that some jackass at Punta Hills tried to be a douchebag and robbed me, thinking that I was retarded, stupid, incoherent, and a jackass like him, until I reported him. Boy, that doesn't look very good when you're a salesman. You fucked up. $1,500 led me to $220 out of my pocket, and I got a $220 return. That's excellent business. See, I could have gone to small claims and fucked them over $10,000, but I'm not greedy. I just told the gentleman from the Better Bureau business that, hey, just make the asshole apologize and return my money. And in the future, don't fuck with people just because you think they're stupid.
Sir, this is your last warning.
Excuse me, Ms. Becerra is your name?
Yes.
Yeah, ma'am. I'm exercising my 42 SC 1983 free speech. And under the California Constitution, under the Brown Act, there's a little harsh words in there, but don't, don't disrupt the speaker in my minimal time of just five minutes because I could be here all night using profanity, but I'm not trying to use profanity. It just happens to be the way I'm thinking and speaking for the record.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on a non-agenda item?
All right. This concerns the person applying for this exemption. They want to-- Okay. Mike Greenspan, Bruin butt-kicking Florida gator, but here, I'm here to kick some butt on the issue. The issue is an exemption. The exemption is, we don't have to follow these rules. Fuck you, city. We can do whatever we want. We want to have a used car lot in the midst of all these wonderful vehicles, nice expensive vehicles, brand new, never owned by anybody but the dealer. Lo and behold, comes this company called Enterprise, and they're very enterprising, even to the point that they, the law just does not apply to them. After all, when you have an auto row, you have used vehicles, they have less than 100 miles on them, and we're wanting to set up a used car lot that has vehicles with 25,000, 30,000, 35,000 miles, old jalopies. Now, I've worked with rental car companies before, Action Auto Rental, Reserve. They were, I guess you could say, a replacement for Enterprise, but we were not a general use, but we were the replacement vehicles. You get your vehicle smashed up, and it's in the shop. You would call a company like us. We'd bring a vehicle out. I'd drive it there. I'd have a little tow car. I'd undo the tow car. You'd do the paperwork. I'd leave in the tow car. You'd get the vehicle. We'd deliver it to you. So the replacement car business is a very good business because we all want our vehicles. This was in the Bay Area. But one of the things that the manager told me was, yes, they've got money because they can always sell their vehicles. They look at their vehicles as cash flow, even though they haven't been sold yet, even though they're still being used by the customers. And so those are very good things. There are other ways to sell them. A neighbor of mine rented a vehicle because his was in the shop. He liked it so much, he wanted to buy it. But he got such a runaround by the rental car company, forget it. He just went back to his vehicle that he had once it got repaired. So the main thing is, instead of setting up a used car lot, you should use the Carvana type thing, or you can even have something at your business. If you want to buy a vehicle, call this number, give the license plate if possible, or the make and model and location, and then they could get that vehicle for them. And you don't have to set up a used car lot and an eyesore right in the middle of all these cars to sell your jalopies. Who wants their jalopy? I mean, if you had a certain amount of money to spend and you can get a new vehicle or a used vehicle, which one would you get? You get a used vehicle, then you're getting all the problems. You don't know what's under that hood unless you've got a good mechanic to tell you. Used car salesmen are not the most reliable. In fact, years ago, someone did a survey, and they said real estate salesmen are one step above a used car salesman. And during the Nixon days, there would be posters, would you buy a used car from this man? I don't think anybody in this room would. So the connotation of a used car is a bad connotation, and you don't need to be putting eyesores in the midst of a nice auto row area. I had a problem with Enterprise. I tried to rent a car, and I was getting off in North Florida, and my flight wouldn't land till 10:55. I even called the Enterprise recording, and they said their counter was open at the airport till 1:30, until I actually called and got a live person who told me when I made the reservation, well, you have to pick it up by 10:00. I said, but my flight doesn't land until 10:55. It was like talking to that wall over there. They didn't get it. Now, if they can't keep a rental car counter open, imagine what they would do when selling you a used car. The old saying, say anything to make the sale. Well, it has a limited warranty, but then when you try to go in there to cash in on that warranty because they sold you a fucked up car, guess what? Tough shit. Too bad, sucker, you bought it, now it's yours. And that's the way used car companies are. At least you get a new car, you've got at least a three-year warranty, maybe a seven-year warranty, depending on the company. But with Enterprise, all you're getting is fucked. And I just think that they ought to go back where they belong, to the other side of the railroad tracks, and take their eyesore with them.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on a non-agendized item? Paulina, can we get the staff report who will present?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I will start off the presentation, and Joanne and I will be giving the presentation jointly this evening. So the item before you tonight is the overlay zone for the auto plaza area in the city of West Covina. It's a continuance of the, or we had previously presented this item to you. We can go to the next slide. So this is the specific properties that we are looking to place the overlay zone on. These are properties that comprise of the West Covina Auto Plaza Business Improvement District. They're currently zoned service commercial, which is one of the most broadest zoning in the city. It allows for the broadest amount of uses within this zone. So next slide. A little bit of history about the Auto Plaza Business Improvement District. It was started in the 1980s as the West Covina Auto Plaza. There was guidelines that were established by the city and the former redevelopment agency establishing it as a district for new car dealerships. It wasn't until 1993 that the Auto Plaza Business Improvement District was established, and it was established in order for the dealerships within the district to start assessing themselves so that they can pay toward the reader board sign that you see today. It wasn't until, I think, 2015 that the Auto Plaza came to the city and asked for another loan, or a loan so that they can upgrade the reader board to an LED sign, which is what you see today. So within the Auto Plaza, there are seven districts, benefit zones, and they're assessed annually to cover the expenses of the Auto Plaza Reader Board and managing the BID. There are also, throughout the history of the Auto Plaza covenants that were placed on property, or properties within the Auto Plaza that restricted it to new car dealerships only. Second slide. The city received a request from the Auto Plaza BID for an overlay zone in July. The City Council voted to initiate the code amendment and the zone change at the July 20th meeting. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposed changes at the August 24th meeting and requested additional information. And then tonight, the Planning Commission will review the additional information and make a recommendation to the City Council. The Planning Commission's recommendation will be presented to the City Council for consideration. As I mentioned earlier, the Auto Plaza consists of seven dealership properties, which equals there are seven members of the BID. On May 26, the Auto Plaza BID held its annual meeting to place the assessments, to vote on the annual budget, to place the assessments on their properties, and issues or discussions regarding to issues of the Auto Plaza were brought up. Subsequently, the July 6 meeting with the Auto Plaza BID was held, and it was specific to the overlay zone. At that meeting, it was the majority of the BID members that voted to submit the request to the city for the overlay zone. Just some of the additional information we wanted to share. Based on averages, these are the averages that each of the uses would provide in the Auto Plaza, or these are anticipated annual sales tax revenue to the city based on the use. So as you could see, a car rental is $15,000 to $25,000. A used car dealership can range between $125,000 to $175,000, and a new car dealership between $400,000 and upwards of $500,000 a year that the city would receive in annual sales tax. So I believe I will turn it over to Joanne, the Planning Manager, now.
I just wanted to provide a little bit of clarification to this chart that these figures are obtained from HDL, the city's business license consultant services, and it is an average, they provide it as an average figure for the state of California. So staff did a survey of cities, current cities that allow new car dealerships. Since we've, we only had a short period of time to do the survey, we called many different cities, and these are the three cities that responded to us right away, same day or the day after I made the phone call or sent the email. So the city of Industry allows for new, only allows only for new car dealerships in their Auto Plaza. They, they do allow for used vehicle as a trade-in, and uses that are auto-related are only allowed as an accessory use to the new car dealership in the city of Industry's Auto Plaza area. As far as the city of Cerritos is concerned, the city of Cerritos only allows new car dealerships by right in their Cerritos Auto Square. All other vehicle-related uses require a conditional use permit. For the city of Thousand Oaks, all uses, all uses that are going in their Auto Plaza area, whether it's a new car dealership or used car dealership, require, requires a development permit. There is no by-right use allowed within their auto dealership. So they require development permit, whether it's going to be a director's review if it's less than, if it's more than 400 feet away from residential, or if it's, if it, I'm sorry, if it's less than 400 feet away from residential, it's a director's review, and if it's more than 400 feet away from residential, it requires Planning Commission review. As Paulina mentioned earlier, for service, for the service commercial zoning, the service commercial zoning allows a broader range of permitted uses, which are considered by right. And currently, those uses range from retail to mortuaries, reprograffics, commercial laundry services, and so forth. So these are only examples of uses that are allowed in the service commercial zone by right. And currently, the Auto Plaza, the West Covina Auto Plaza area is zoned as service commercial. So if any of these uses were to go in there and, and were not going to involve any major construction, then they are able to go there by right. I'll go ahead and go over some of the changes that are included in the draft, the draft code amendment, permitted uses, only, only new car vehicle sales are permitted by, would be permitted by right. Other accessory uses are allowed, but only as an accessory to the primary use, which is new vehicle sales done by a major franchise, or, or done by the manufacturer of the vehicle Sales of used cars are allowed, but only 30% of the total inventory of the vehicles on site. Temporary uses are allowed. The only temporary use allowed is filming, but it's only filming for the dealership advertisement itself. So all other filming would not be allowed as part of this draft code amendment. There were some concerns with security at night due to transience. So one of the requests involved security lighting, so light standards or poles would be required to be lit until nine, from sunset until 9:00 PM, and dimmer lightings would have to be on from 9:00 PM to sunrise. And there is also a, a statement in this, in this code section or in this proposed code section that refers to the non, the development standards in the non-residential zones being, being, or being required to be adhered to if there is any development on site. Other changes would be the film permit section. It's to cross-reference the proposed overlay zone section so that, so that it's, it would be easier to find, and there would be no confusion. And also, there's also a cross-reference in the non-residential use section for the same reason. With this, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt the resolutions recommending that the City Council approve Zone Change 2101 and Code Amendment 2101. If the Planning Commission has any questions, Paulina, Ivy, and I are available to answer.
Thank you for the staff. Joanne? Does the Planning Commission have any questions for staff? I'll go one by one. Commissioner Gutierrez, he's not here today. Commissioner Williams?
Um, I do.
Steph, I have three questions. The first, what date was the overlay zone request filed with the city?
What date was submitted to the city, or was it taken to City Council? I apologize.
The actual paperwork submitted formally to the city.
I think she's looking for that information, Commissioner.
She said in July.
Joanne's verifying that.
I'm sorry?
Chair, Madam Chair, she's verifying the information.
While I go ahead and look for, look through my records, if you can ask the other questions.
Okay. And then the second question is, what date was the CUP application filed?
Commissioner Williams, as Joanne is looking for that information, just a reminder to, to everybody in the room that the Enterprise CUP is not before the Commission tonight and is an entirely separate application.
Commissioner Heng, you have any questions?
Commissioner Williams, do you have a last question, or?
Oh, Commissioner Williams, sorry, Madam Chair, I have the answer. So the application, I believe, was submitted August 4th for the overlay zone.
Okay.
So the application by the Auto Plaza BID was submitted that day.
Commissioner Williams, do you have any other questions?
And the last one that I had was, depending on the action that the Commission takes this evening, for example, if the overlay zone request is recommended for approval to the City Council, my question was, what would the ramifications be for the CUP application that had been submitted to the city?
Well, as you know, tonight, you'll be making a land use-based recommendation to the City Council. We don't know whether or not the City Council will then approve the code amendment. Assuming that it does, Joanne, do you want to? I mean, the, this, this, basically, again, the Enterprise, by the way, the Enterprise CUP application was submitted August 12. So it's early on in the process. It's being processed just with, just as any other application would be, but because it's so early, timelines are uncertain. We don't know what the Council is going to do with this zoning code amendment, so we really cannot delineate with any certainty what the ramifications would be. We don't know, it's a whole, the CUP application is its own independent process. We don't know when it will be a completed application, how long it will go through the process, so we really can't answer that question for certain.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Heng, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. I just want to ask you regarding, could you pull up the map again, the overlay? It seems like there's a little pink dot area that's not included in overlay. I'm just curious in terms of what it is.
That red dot, are you talking about right there where Joanne has the red blinker?
Yes.
That's the gas station, and so that--
That's not zoned as service commercial. That's zoned as neighborhood commercial, so that would not be included in the overlay zone.
Okay, thank you. The other questions that I have is, what was a used, can you show me on the map again, Joanne? I'm sorry. Which, so which lot is it that we're talking about that is not in use currently?
Oh. I have a better map.
Not in use, meaning?
So that is vacant? Is that your question?
Correct.
Okay, so as far as uses that are vacant, it is-- Okay, so as far as uses that are vacant, it is?
The teal, the teal and the yellow are currently vacant.
Number seven, right here, this is the former Drive Time dealership and number three.
So those are not currently in use, what was it used before?
They were used as car dealerships in the past. So before number seven was Drive Time, it used to be a Hummer dealership. And before number three was vacant, it was, it was a Clippinger Chevrolet.
So it was never used for the used car?
Okay, so number seven was most recently Drive Time, which was a used car dealership. But before it was Drive Time, it was a Hummer car dealership, which was a new car dealership.
I guess where I'm getting at is that since the area that was created since the eighties, was there any other use besides car dealership? Because this whole area was sort of like come together and form an auto dealership since the eighties, 83 or so. So I guess my question, my question is, was there any other use besides car dealerships or? Used car dealership?
Commissioner Hang, as, during the establishment of the auto plaza, they started acquiring properties to create what we see today as the auto plaza area, the BID. There were previously residential properties that were acquired, but as far as commercial uses, it's always been new car dealerships with the exception of Drive Time as a used car dealership. There hasn't been like a, from my, from my knowledge, there wasn't a shopping center that was there. It was residential that was acquired to create the auto plaza.
Okay, and the other questions I have is that currently the zoning code has an SC, which is service commercial. So can you pull up that list again, the service commercial? So I guess the service commercial has retail use from a retails to bakery to mortuary. That's a huge spect of different type of services that can go in there. And I guess what I'm trying to ask is that if we were after tonight, whether it's having an overlap of an overlay, so right now, from a wide spectrum of what uses that they can do to only new car use, not even used car use, is that correct? The overlay?
The overlay would restrict it to new car dealerships with the accessory of used car dealership. So they would be able to do used car dealership sales as long as it's accessory to the primary use of new car dealership.
Okay. And then also the other, the other portion was the film use instead of like, prior to this overlay, I guess they can do other films? And I just can't imagine what other films? I don't know, so.
I think Joanne can speak to this a little bit more, but the city does allow filming in the city. And so there is a permit that's required within the city of West Covina, the boundaries. I guess the, the auto plaza BID mentioned that the filming at those locations create concerns for them because of traffic and parking and accessibility to their dealerships for their vendors. And I think that they can speak more to the issues that the filming causes, the auto plaza.
Okay. I guess I'm, I'm just curious in terms of like how many, is it used as a studios or it's just once in a while use or what is it?
As far as filming is concerned, there are two different types of filming in the, in the code. One is the, just a film permit application, which allows for five days of filming every 60 days. And there, one, and then the other one is, is what's called a major motion picture type of filming, which allow, which requires basically a month, a month's notice, approximately a month's notice to the city. And it may require planning commission approval, but that does not have a limitation. It's whatever the planning commission would approve. But again, but most of the filming in, in, in this area require, just requires a film permit because, because it's, it's typically commercials that are, applications for commercials that are filmed and they don't typically plan a month ahead of time.
So I guess what I'm trying to ask is that this particular area right now, the two, the two lot that is in questions, are they being used as a film often or just? How many times that last year was?
Whatever the code allows for regular film permits, which is five days, five days of filming, not counting setup or, or clean, or cleanup, which typically lasts also like around two to five days. And, and it's allowed every 60 days.
And Commissioner Hang, I would like to clarify, it's for the entire overlay zone. So all of the properties within that area would be restricted to this filming.
Well, I understand that. I'm just trying to see what was it, what was it prior to this overlay that we're going to do the restrictions? I guess my question is that is this particular two locations being used as a film studios or what was it being used for in the past? Yeah.
The film permit, it's a temporary use permit. So it's, it's not a, like a film, I mean, I guess, you know, we'll see what the speakers say, but the film permit is, is meant to be a temporary permit for filming purposes.
Okay, all right.
And permanent film studios are not allowed in this, in this area. And to answer Commissioner Williams' question earlier, the, the letter requesting city council initiation of the code amendment was received by staff on, let's see, on July 6th of 2021. The, it went to city council on July 20th of 2021, when council initiated the code amendment. And the enterprise application, conditional use permit application, which is not a subject of today's agenda, was submitted on August 12, 2021.
Commissioner Hang, do you have any more questions?
Just one last question regarding the service commercials versus the new auto overlay. I guess if we, the codes, if it was changed, then there's no other options to have any other options besides new car use for that, those particular zone?
So commissioners, as you, after you hear the public tonight, as you deliberate, in the application before you restricts, you know, is, is requesting a zone change to restrict it to new auto uses. However, this commission, you know, it's a recommendation to, to city council, this commission could recommend approval or denial or could recommend some modification if you wish, or modifications to be considered. So that can be factored into your deliberations.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Lewis, you have any questions?
Yes. My, my main question goes toward, my understanding, there's restrictive covenants on certain parcels of the proposed overlay zone, which, which limit the development of those parcels to new auto dealerships. Which specific parcels are contained within that?
I would, I don't know the parcel numbers, but I believe they were for the parcel, for the dealership, the former Drive Time and then the Clippinger Chevrolet. And I believe the Ford dealership as well.
Are those, are those covenants still in place?
I would have to check with the city attorney's office.
And, and who, who holds the right to enforce those restrictive covenants?
I believe they were, city covenants would be the city.
I have a question. Mr. Tuck had made reference to one of the lots, and correct me if I'm wrong, you said the teal and the yellow are the ones in question. So one of them is larger than the other? Would they be able to perhaps maybe divide them or move the property lines to make it more functional?
The, the lot line adjustment process is, since they, they both own par, both parcels, the lot line adjustment process is administrative process done, processed by our engineering division. So yes, they would be able to apply for a lot line adjustment.
Any other questions before we open public hearing?
I actually have one. Since Commissioner Lewis brought up a restrictive covenant, what is that restrictive covenant? Is that just a covenant to? Do you know what it is?
Commissioners, we do not have that information for you tonight, but it is, that's not really within your jurisdiction or purview anyway. So you're really here to make a land use decision tonight and a recommendation to council on the proposed zone change. We can certainly get you that information, but it, that, the covenants, they're not directly related to the land use decision before you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll hear from the applicant. Would you like to come forward? If you've already spoken previously, you don't have to come up, your, your statements are on record, but if you'd like to, you're more than welcome to.
I'm, I'm sorry, Chair, if I may?
Yes.
If it, there was, there were a few requests received by, by the planning commission from the, the various car dealership owners to speak to the planning commission. If the planning commission had, had met or spoke to any of these car dealership owners, right now is the time to, to bring up that discussion on what was discussed.
Have any other commissioners spoken, spoken with anyone from either party?
I'm sorry, if we were to meet up with any of the dealerships, we have to discuss about our meeting, is that what it is? Yes.
Yeah, just so to briefly disclose your communications, if you've met with any, any of the parties involved and, and, and received any information that might factor into your decision tonight, then you should disclose that.
Well, I didn't get a chance to meet up with any party at all, so.
Well, we'll just ask everyone individually. So at this time, we'll remind the commissioners to disclose if they have had any communication with members of the public pertaining to the application. Commissioner Williams?
No, I have had no communication with either parties.
Commissioner Hang?
I have not.
Vice Chair Lewis?
I've had no communications with the applicant or any dealerships pertaining to this particular item in front of us.
Nor has Chair. So at this time, I'm sorry, we, now we can proceed.
I have a presentation I'd like to present you with. I can guide you through the slides as I speak, if that's preferable. My name's Becca Viegas and I'm here representing Simon Saradine. He's the president of the BID and also owner of Envision Motors. So I've been privy to the previous meetings and all the conversations. And there's a couple of things I wanted to accomplish today. I wanted to kind of let you know who we are and what we believe a new car dealer means to West Covina. I want to talk about the financial impact of the overlay zone. And I also wanted to review the overall impact of the auto plaza, on the auto plaza. Is everyone having an okay time hearing me? So on to the slide that says a little bit about who we are. So Simon Saradine and Frank Zarabi created Envision Motors. And Simon Saradine's here with us today. He's been in the automotive business for over 32 years and has been very successful building relationships with all the manufacturers as well that have, having a lot of success in the retail car business. He's been awarded best of the best and similar awards with Mercedes-Benz, Audi and, and all the manufacturers that he's worked with. Frank Zarabi, his business partner, has been, he's president of Fan Brands. He's been a leader in the manufacturing apparel industry for over 30 years and also has achieved a tremendous amount of business success. Just in the last 15 years, he's acquired six businesses between 10 and 80 billion, excuse me, 80 million dollars in sales. As Envision Motors, they've acquired eight dealerships, four of them here in West Covina in just the last couple of years. And they're poised to acquire several additional dealerships this year, which means they've gone through the approval process with five different manufacturers to be granted a new car franchise, which is a, a really big deal. It's quite a process. I've spent the last 14 years of my career with Mercedes-Benz, privy to a lot of those conversations about how a new car dealership is, is granted a franchise. So they've been able to do that with five manufacturers so far. So they have eight dealerships currently and are looking to grow this year. Their revenue this year will be over 1, 1.1 billion dollars. Also here with us today is Jen, he's the general manager from Norm Reeves Honda here in West Covina, and they've been part of the West Covina community since 1999. They employ over 100 people here in West Covina and they sell more than 6,000 cars a year, generating 100 million, 90 million dollars in annual revenue. Also, just as a side note, Envision Motors just purchased 95 acres directly from the city of Carson. So they'd definitely love to work with the cities. So a little bit about what a new car franchise means to the city of West Covina. We know that new car dealers employ significantly more employees than used car dealers. We currently have, it says here 500, I think we're getting actually close to 600 employees here in the auto plaza and most of them are West Covina residents. The other thing that seemed unclear for some of the previous communications, and then we clarified it a bit today, is that when we say new car dealer, we don't only sell new cars. We also sell certified used cars, uncertified used cars, used cars and previous loaner, service loaner vehicles, which means we really do have a very broad range of accessible vehicles for any member of the community. With that said, we're also very welcoming of competition. We would love to see a new car franchise in either of those locations. We feel it's the best use for the property and we also feel like the use that it's had most recently, doing filming kind of off and on, we don't feel like it's the best use. We also feel like it's disruptive. My understanding, it's been every couple of months and it is kind of a big production. If you've ever come down the, the street that, right there on the auto plaza, you know, it's a very busy street. People excited buying new cars, sometimes go a little fast. It seemed to be a safety concern to me to have additional distraction and things like that, especially things that are so far outside the scope of what the auto plaza's intention is. We also understand that in the past, like we said, that there have been other new car franchises there. So we believe a new car franchise could be there again. I understand the issue of a space requirement has come up before. And of course, whenever you do apply for a new car franchise, they do look at facility and space and size. But because other new car franchises have been there in the past, and also from my understanding, other franchises have shown interest. I believe Range Rover and Volvo were interested and approved in the locations at that point, excuse me, at those locations at some point, but decided not to move forward in West Covina. And there are a lot of factors that could lead to a new car franchise not being approved outside of just the size of the land, right? So for, for my experience with Mercedes-Benz and my experience with Envision, buying eight dealerships, I know that there's a long list of things that, that have to happen, right? So the general manager has to be approved, the owner's financial stability is reviewed, their reputation, their relationships, and also they have to have an active DMV license. So if any of those things aren't in line, we understand that that could be what's holding a new car dealer from being awarded a franchise. It's not just space. So we believe the best use for the space is as a new car dealer. And we understand from our perspective that that would be possible. Under the next slide with financial impact. Under the next slide with financial impact. So, I think the obvious point is tax revenue. So, a new car franchise demands as much as eight times the tax revenue as a used car franchise does. And it's not just from sales. We also generate, generate a significant amount of income from service and as well as from reconditioning our used cars to be in the best condition possible for our customers. And what it boils down to, to for us, is that enterprise will merely hurt sales for us because we are already in the used car space. Used cars also, used car lots also don't make the same investment in their facility and in their cars and most, mostly in advertising than a new car franchise does. So, in the Auto Plaza currently, last year, 11,587 cars sold with an average of $400 average per car dedicated to advertising. That's $4.6 million advertising budget. So, to bring in a used car franchise that won't have that same requirement and won't make that same commitment, they will very heavily benefit from all of the effort and all of the dollars contributed by the new car dealerships. And what will happen is not just, it's not going to be adding additional revenue. All it does is take revenue from the new car dealers that are already here supporting the Auto Plaza in West Covina. So, as far as the Auto Plaza impact, we feel like it's a mutual benefit to support the current dealers as well as to help maximize the sales potential. We would love to see the integrity of the Auto Plaza maintained. We agree that vacancy is not good for anyone. We don't, we wouldn't like to see that, that land stay vacant, but we really don't believe that a used car dealership is the best use for it and for the future of the Auto Plaza. We also believe filming is not the right answer. I know we've, we've reviewed that. We feel it's disruptive, and it's not giving the, the land the best use possible to support the overall Auto Plaza. And we really feel like adding a used car dealership devalues the space. Right now, maybe it'll be a reputable used car dealership, but it really leaves a door open for Joe's Auto Sales or any of the places that we know have kind of an earned stigma as a used car dealership. That's not usually a very good experience for customers. With that said, there are plenty of other businesses that dictate what they can, you know, put into a space. If a Galleria or even a strip mall has an opening, they're, they're particular about what they put because they understand that if you put the wrong thing into a place with a different intended purpose, that it can really make it difficult to attract the right companies going forward. So, we would love to see it stay as a new car only Auto Plaza so that we can hopefully attract new and successful franchises in the future. Additionally, there are a lot of very successful auto malls that are operating new cars only, and three of the largest local auto malls, Wentz Hills, Ontario, and Cerritos, they're all new cars only at this point as well. So, just in conclusion, we're really here asking for your help. We're asking for your help to support the overlay zone, to keep it an all-new car Auto Plaza. We have a very vested interest in this. The dealerships, the new car dealerships that are in the Auto Plaza currently are valued between $20 million and $100 million, and we continue to invest in the community and in our employees, making the facilities up to code and up to speed and brand new and shiny. And we, we have extremely vested interest in making sure that we can keep it an all-new car facility so that we can have success across the board. And we feel like it does help maximize sales potential and tax revenue potential. We believe that it contributes to the safety and the aesthetics of the auto mall. Our car dealers are open very early in the morning for service, and they close very late at night for sales, which is very good for the aesthetics of the area as well as for the safety, just to have the lots lit at all times. And we really do feel like it preserves the future of the Auto Plaza, is keeping it successful, and to really highlight West Covina as a premier car-buying city. So, I thank you for your time. Do you have any questions for me?
Does the planning commissioner have any questions for the applicant? We'll start with Commissioner Gutierrez. Commissioner Williams?
No, not at this time.
Commissioner Hang?
Thank you.
Vice Chair Lewis?
No.
At this time, we don't have any questions. Thank you. Anyone who is for the overlay, they would like to come up and speak? We have actually, I believe you were available for questions. Simon, did you want to, did you have anything you wanted to add? Perfect. Yes, I believe that was a good presentation.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Do you have any questions of, of those, those people who submitted cards? Madam Chair, do you want to read their names? There are four, right, but they're available for questions?
Those were, excuse me. That was, we, the other ones we have are against.
Okay, and then for the record, we have Commissioner Gutierrez joining us. He was able to join us for the public hearing portion, so that's fantastic. And Commissioner Gutierrez, before we proceed, may I just ask, we had a, a section for disclosure of ex-party communications. Do you have any to report?
What, what, what communications?
Just any outside communications with any of the, the parties involved in this application or any of the speakers?
Yes, I had conversations to go over. I, we were emailed this PowerPoint. I was called by representatives of Envision Motors.
Thank you. And...
Also, I wanted to add, I was called by Mr. Tuck, but we, I just told him at this time, I could not discuss anything. Both parties were contacting, I believe, every commissioner, and, but we did not discuss anything on the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, commissioners. Apologize for the interruption. Please continue with the public hearing.
Those opposed, we'll call out Christopher Peterson.
Good evening, commission members. I'm an attorney representing Azusa Garvey Properties, who owns the properties at issue here. What we really heard from the applicant was what this is about. She said, quote, "This really hurts sales." This is about competition. In the first instance, the request by the applicant to propose or to approve this proposed zoning change is really unprecedented. The association has never done that before. Association has not used its influence or power as a sword to stifle competition of other members, and that's what this is really about. It's not about the benefit that can be provided to the city, and the city, the commissioners will hear about the benefit that Enterprise will provide. It's about what stifling competition and preventing Enterprise from coming in does and benefits for Envision Motors, the applicant. This fact alone should give the commission pause as to whether to recommend approval of this zoning change. It is a self-interested act, a conflict of interest from the president of the association, and they are seeking to promote their own interests only at the expense of the other members of the association. And I sent a letter to Ms. Burns that I hope all of you received on September 2nd. And the point of that letter was to let you know that there is an internal governance dispute between the association. Now, we heard earlier from staff's presentation about, about, excuse me, a July 6th meeting of the association, a vote that was taken, and a letter then was submitted to the city for the proposed zoning change. That was not a, a proper meeting. It was not noticed pursuant to the bylaws of the association, which require very specific notice requirements. And the item of the proposed overlay zone was not agendized. It was not properly agendized, so there was no notice, there was no proper agenda for that meeting that was held July 6th. And so, there was no ability of Envision Motors to present an application or a request or whatever it may be called. It was not properly done through the association's own guidelines and bylaws. And so, there's a remedy for that. And the Azusa Garvey Properties has exercised that remedy by requesting under the bylaws that the association call and hold a special meeting so that this specific issue can be properly noticed, agendized, and discussed by all members of the association. My client did not receive any notice of the July 6th meeting and was not present, was not able to present its position to the association regarding the overlay zone. And so, the request for a special meeting was submitted to the association officers on August 30th. This evening, the association provided notice to the association members that it is set a special meeting to specifically address and discuss the proposed overlay zone on October 27th. And what you heard during the last meeting by the applicant was that the association recommends or proposes or, or approves of this proposed zoning change. That's simply not true. That's really misleading. And the simple fact is, because it was not proper notice for the meeting, and the topic of the proposed overlay zone was not properly agendized, it can't be the formal position of the association. That formal position can be discussed on October 27th after a formal meeting of the association and then presented to the commission. At this stage, it would really be premature for the planning commission to adopt or recommend approval of the proposed overlay zone, given that the October 27th special meeting of the association is set to specifically address that issue. That will give the opportunity to the association members, and all members this time, to specifically address the issues that are before the commission, and then return and allow, or, or address the commission with respect to those issues that they maybe approve or continue to approve of or recommend, or maybe they disapprove of at that point. It just allows the Auto Association members the opportunity to present their position and allow the association to present a formal position back to the commission. Given that the city has current protections in place with respect to filming, with respect to approval of the CUP for used auto sales, there really is no rush here, and there should be no rush to push this through and approve and present this to the council. What we would ask is that the commission briefly pause, allow the special meeting to occur, the special meeting of the Auto Association to occur on October 27th, and take up this issue again following that meeting after the association has a formal and proper meeting and can formally present its position regarding the overlay zone at that time. Thank you, commissioners. Any questions?
Any questions?
I have a question. Okay. I just wanted to confirm the members of the association. If you could confirm, so we have Envision Jeep, Dodge, Ram, Chrysler, Envision Mercedes-Benz Service Department, Envision Mercedes, Envision Audi, Envision Toyota, Norm Reeves Honda, Performance Ford, and then the two vacant lots, correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, that's not incorrect. I'm sorry. I've been corrected by, I believe, Mr. Tuck, who...
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the time.
Jeff Tuck?
Thank you, Chris. Members of the planning commission, my name's Jeff Tuck. I'm here tonight to represent the interest of the Azusa Garvey LLC and Bentley Real Estate, the owners of the properties located at 1900, 1932, and 2000 East Garvey Avenue South. These properties are known as the Ford dealership, the Ex-Clippager Chevrolet dealership, and the Ex-Drive Time dealership. As I said before you on, on August 24th, the actions being placed before you tonight are completely unnecessary. The city already has ample oversight and protection under the existing code on these issues. A dealer selling pre-owned vehicles in the Auto Plaza must obtain a CUP in order to do so. The planning commission has the ability to reject an undesirable operator while still having the right to approve a professional, national business such as our prospective tenant, Enterprise Car Sales and Rental, a tenant that any city would be fortunate to have, bringing in much-needed sales tax revenue. Why would the city need to change the code when they already have this control? In regards to the filming of commercials on site, the city code controls the approval process completely. The number of days when filming is allowed, the number of times filming may occur each year, and the number of days between such filming is regulated. The code governing filming was made even more stringent last year. There is sufficient oversight to prevent abuse. Why would any and all properties within the city have the right to allow filming except for the Auto Plaza? There was a question about, right now, I think four commercials are filmed a year at, at the facility. At the previous meeting, the commission voted to continue this item in order for the Auto Center Association to attempt to resolve this internal disagreement. We have done exactly what the commission requested. On August 30th, we sent a letter to the association and Paulina Morales as its secretary requesting a special meeting of the members under the bylaws to discuss. This meeting must take place not less than 35 days and no more than 90 days after the receipt of that request. This afternoon, we got a message that the meeting has been scheduled now for October 27th. Subsequently, after we made this request of the special meeting, we were given notice of this special hearing tonight. I thought that you all wanted us to work this out amongst other members of the association. Why is there such a hurry? Is there a timetable that someone has committed to for this action? Please let us have the time for this meeting to be held. Continue this item until after the association meeting takes place. The pertinent question raised by one of the commissioners at the last meeting was, can we do this when the item was presented? The city attorney gave an explanation of the path of this action. I believe the more germane point is, is this action legal? How can you deny someone the use of their property, a use that was legal when the property was obtained? This is a question that I believe the commissioner was asking. As I have said, this is an internal dispute amongst the association. Unfortunately, when the association was set up, I don't think anyone anticipated that one person would control multiple properties and then as president of the association, abuse his position by putting forward actions that would specifically benefit him and his business. His power grab has not happened since the association's inception in 1993. I also think it is important for your understanding of this issue for you to ask Mr. Saradine if his intent is to acquire the properties at 1900 and 1932. Does Mr. Saradine need to relocate one of his franchises to 1932, or else he will lose that franchise? Did Mr. Saradine try to lease the property at 1900 East Garvey with a specific intent of moving a used car operation onto the site, something he is now trying to restrict the current owner from doing? But the sale of used cars on the site is okay for him. How was Mr. Saradine introduced by staff at the last meeting as the applicant? How can an individual propose a code change? My experience of 45 years before the planning commissions, only the city can put forward such a code change. I also wanted to clear up a few things that were said last, at the last meeting. Mr. Saradine said that Drive Time went out of business. They did not go out of business. They occupied the 1900 East Garvey address for five years until the end of their lease. They chose to consolidate several existing locations...
Madam Chair, speaker has exceeded his time.
And you let them speak for however long they wanted to speak. You have no timer for them. Excuse me.
Their timer was on.
There was no timer for them when they spoke in favor.
I'm sorry. 15 minutes is what is allowed to each person.
Madam Chair, you can allow the speaker to finish his comments if you like.
Thank you. So, proponents of this action lamented at the last meeting, Enterprise is being able to sell the same car for $1,000 less than they can. Isn't this competition? Isn't this the American way? Planning Commission shouldn't, should keep, shouldn't keep out of a potential tenant because it might offer competition. The purpose of this commission is to act in the best interest of the city, not the interest of one person, to protect the property rights of the minority, not to eliminate competition, not to pick winners and losers. Let the association have the opportunity... Let the association have the opportunity to meet. Continue this action until after that meeting takes place. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for--
I have a question. I just wanted to confirm, because I've narrowed down the owners here. We have Simon Seradine and his partner, and then we have Performance Ford and Norm Reeves Honda, and then just to confirm, Azusa Garvey Properties is owned by Mr. Alhanson, correct? The Alhanson family?
It's an LLC.
Okay, so they have no involvement into that company?
Which Mr. Alhanson are you referring to?
Mr. Alhanson, I believe there's Sharik and Mohammed Alhanson.
Tarek and Mohammed Alhanson are partners in the LLC.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is some handouts if you want. Just want to clear one thing up on the prior thing. Tarek Alhanson and Tareef Alhanson are managers of Bentley Real Estate and managers of Azusa Garvey Properties. They are not owners. They just manage the LLC. There's another entity that is the owner of the LLC. So my name is Jerry Barth. I'm a financial consultant for the ownership. I've been working with them for over five years, and the point of my presentation is just to discuss what was said at the last August 24th meeting and to basically refute some of the issues that were raised. The first one was that the, it was a long discussion over the fact that used car sales have a negative impact on the image of the automobile zone and that used car sales operations are not subject to refurbishing and reconditioning requirements. And I just wanted to point out that if you go and look at the materials, you'll see that Enterprise has 109-point reconditioning requirement for all of their vehicles, and all of their vehicles are reconditioned. That's compared to the Honda dealership, which I went to their website. They had 161 cars, used cars offered for sale. Only 60 of them were pre-certified. The other 100 were not. And West Covina Toyota had 181 used cars offered on their website. 16 were Toyota certified. So the discussion that used car, especially somewhat of the stature of Enterprise, the fact that they do not recondition their vehicles was a misstatement. All of their vehicles are recertified. The second thing had to do with the sales tax issue. Enterprise is forecasting anywhere from $30 to $35 million in annual revenue, which would generate $3.5 million in sales tax roughly, of which the city would be getting 1% or somewhere between $350,000. If you were to put a new car dealership in there, they may sell 300 to 350 cars a year. They could generate $1.5 million to $2 million, maybe even $3 million. The point being that whether it's a new vehicle dealership there or a used car dealership, the amount of sales tax probably generated for the city is going to be the same. And that's partly due to the size of the location and the amount of cars that you can have on the lot and the type of volume you're going to have. So, again, the statement that new vehicle dealerships generate eight times the sales tax revenue of used car businesses, I believe is a misstatement also. Two other things just to touch on briefly. As far as the film production goes, the 1932 property has extensive parking both in the front and especially in the rear of the building, plus it has a totally underground parking area. And the only traffic interference when there's film production is when a auto truck carrier comes to bring cars that will be used at the commercial shoot and then takes those cars away. That's no different than the interruption of the dealerships there when they get delivery of new cars. Other than that, all of the production trucks, all of the parking, everything that's involved with the commercial shoot is self-contained within 1932 and has no impact on East Garvey Avenue. So, in summary, the last thing that was brought up was the lighting of the vacant dealership as a safety hazard. The ownership has agreed to comply with any lighting requirements that the association deems to be there. That's not a problem. So, that's pretty much, I provided in my attachment summaries of the various websites that I took screenshots of and also the summary of the Enterprise reconditioning and all of their points. Does anyone have any questions?
We'll go ahead and save the questions for the rest. We have a few more to go.
Oh, okay. I just, okay. Thank you.
Thomas Klinger?
Thank you for giving me a time to speak to you guys tonight. I did reach out to, through Lydia Desara, I think that's how you say her name, to speak with each of you if I could. She just got back to me this week, but I just want to let you know that I have tried to reach out to meet with you guys and let you know what Enterprise can bring, individually, of course. And I do appreciate Commissioner Williams' comments and questions about the dates. I do think the dates are pretty concerning of how all these actions have taken place. And the last time we met, we did, you guys, I thought, made a great decision about setting this aside and letting the CUP application take its course and also allowing the association to meet again. And I would encourage you, and I think the attorney laid it out very well, that we really should pause and let that happen. I feel like Enterprise, we've gotten in the middle of something that we didn't realize we were getting in the middle of. We didn't understand that there was this discontent amongst the auto association. But we are obviously a very well-known business, and we bring a very good brand that we would represent in West Covina, and we want to do so. I do think it's interesting and a little bit concerning that we'd be choosing sides amongst competitors about what, about another, the owner of a property and how that property is zoned and making a zoning change to that. It's zoned service commercial, and that gives this, the city, the most opportunity they could have in order to decide what goes in that property. If you did not want a used car operator to be on that property, you can deny the CUP application. If you change the zoning to what this zoning would do, you'll no longer have that opportunity for the city to deny a CUP application. So you remove the ability for the city to have any decision in that used car operation or any other business that might want to operate there that would require, excuse me, require a CUP application. So I think that's a really important thing to recognize here and realize that this zoning change is just not needed at all. If you don't want a used car operation there, then you don't have to. You deny the application, and that's that. So, I think changing and recognizing that that's a permanent change that you're doing to a property that's already existing and now changing how the owner of a property could use it is really a concerning thing, especially when that mechanism is already there to deny a use that you did not want there. So, I do think it's important to look again at, we talked last time I was here, about a new car operator going into that site. While it's true that Hummer was at that site before, that's been years ago that a new car dealer fit on a site of that size, and it is just not big enough to fit a new car dealer. There's, it just, you need more space than that, and any new car operation is going to tell you that they need more space than the 1.8 acres that we would occupy on that spot. The other thing I want to talk to you about is the sales tax. I respect to the numbers that were put out there, but we do operate this business. So I will tell you that the operation that we would bring there from our daily rental operations is a point of sale is right there. So that sales tax that gets generated from a daily rental operation goes directly to the city because it operates right there. That is the point of sale. Unlike a used car or a new car where the sales tax is collected and registered where the purchaser's address is. So that alone, daily rental operation, that, it'll be about a 300-car operation to start, and that will generate close to 420,000 of sales tax revenue a year. And you'll be taking away the ability for the city of Covina to get their share, West Covina, to get their share of that property tax, or sales, excuse me, sales tax if you pass this zoning change. The other point I want to point out, there's been a lot of talk about advertising. He already talked about our 109-point inspection, so I want to elaborate on that again. But our advertising budget for the United States is over $15 million a month. One would, I think you probably have all seen our Enterprise ads that are on national TV, and you would recognize that probably going to be a lot of benefit for everybody who sells cars there from our advertising as well when you see the Enterprise brand, a $26 billion company with impeccable morals and dedicated to what we sell on our properties. So I just really encourage you to pause, is what I would say. Let these other actions take place, and thank you for giving me a time to address this with you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Greenspan?
Mike Greenspan? If you want, you can put the timer on. After all, I'm the guy who raised the issue when the applicant was there with no time and a person behind the attorney sign, I asked. So, for that other speaker who wanted to have the time limit removed on him, I mean, I definitely agree. If one, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and both sides should have the same right to have unlimited time to speak on the issue. And also, if this thing has not been heard by the parties involved fully until that October 27th meeting, we probably are all wasting our time being here because the October 27th meeting would be the impetus for this issue. And without that, we have really nothing. We're just out to do a railroad job. Choo, choo! Well, let's just railroad things through. I've seen governments do that. Gee whiz, that's standard operating procedure. Why do we want to railroad things? I don't get it. But you've got a vacant lot. I'm glad that you guys are, a couple vacant lots, I'm glad you guys are turning on the lights, as I let Mr. Herman know. If we didn't have lights on, you'd probably have a lot of syringes and IV drug use from homeless people because it would be kind of a sneak-around homeless encampment. Someone would break into one of the buildings quietly and be camping out there, squatting. Yeah, that's the word, squatting. And getting free rent where they should be doing business, car business. Not mortuary business, not bakery business, or some of the other special zoning things that you had listed, but actual car business. So I'm grateful that you keep lights on so as to keep away, or people could at least see if somebody's breaking in, hopefully, and squatting on that area. And if that, as the Enterprise guy said, if that is not big enough, those lots for a new car dealership, maybe we should be combining the two properties that are there into one property. I mean, as long as we're looking at things, let's look at everything on the table and not just say, well, we can only fit this in here or fit this in there. I have nothing against rental car businesses. I've often told people, the best tax a government can use, especially at airport places, is to put a tax on rental cars, simply because the people renting them don't even, a lot of them don't even live in the town or the state, and you're taxing out-of-towners that can't vote the politicians out of office anyway. Now, it just means other cities will do the very same thing. Of course, they all do. We've all, I'm sure, we've rented cars in various locations, and it's not the rental car that's the bad thing. When you start looking at the tax and all the things they add on to it, even the people at the rental car counter kind of roll their eyes when looking at everything because some of it is actually ridiculous, and it's everything but the kitchen. Think they're getting out of this. Let's just squeeze them bad. It's kind of the equivalent without the planes with the passenger landing fee, but there's just more taxes they can put on these rental cars that have absolutely nothing to do with the use of the property. It's just a money-making gimmick, and let's squeeze people that cannot vote us out. So we just put every little thing in there. That, whereas you buy a car, you pay the sales tax, not a whole boatload of taxes on top of it. Whereas the rental car, you have a boatload of taxes. And I don't know if there, those figures were right of, oh, the used car versus the new car tax. I would tend to believe that perhaps the revenue would be more from the new cars simply because they are more expensive. And if you're paying a 9.5% or 10% or 10.5% sales tax rate, then the more the vehicle, the more the tax. Now, I know that planning commissions have corruption. Planning and land use committees, Plum in LA, has been so bad that there's a council member, former council member Mitchell Englander, is now in prison, federal prison, for corruption. And there's another one, Jose Wezar, will be having his trial next year. And I'm going to submit it for the record to show you what can happen with misuse from planning.
We have one more. Herman?
Well, it looks like my observation of this topic has a considerable change of heart. And that meaning that I am in support of this operation through Enterprise because we're finding out that there seems to be some wishy-wash bullshit talk going on here tonight. People on one end don't understand their notes. Some people come here unprepared, and it's apparent others come in a little late. But again, we're dealing with sales tax and lighting. Well, one thing is the conditions. The conditions seem to be very intolerable, really. In the city of Downey, Nissan opened up on Firestone. The city in Downey loaned them $1 million to open and operate sales of cars. Now, my only comment was to Nissan during that planning commission was, what kind of discount as a resident do I get for living in 90241 zip code? Gentlemen says, that's a good point. I says, yeah, but what do I benefit? We're loaning you $1 million. What do we get in return? That's the question, commissioners. And then as a result of that, it was passed. They got their million. I plan to go back to ask the mayor there, what percentage do we gain back from that as taxpayers of the city of Downey? Now, I understand-- Now, I understand what salesmen do and sale cars do and operators of businesses have to do. It's called create money. Make money. Show money. So my support for this operation under zone change number 21-01, there can be some red flags removed from this conditions. And you have the ability and the power tonight to make that decision before it goes before Mommy Lopez. And I'm referring to Mommy Lopez, the mayor, who sits there the nights that I come in to talk to her. And my elegant speech doesn't surprise her because, yes, I have to use my vulgarity to steer her up, to make her think, do we want growth or do we want to steal from the public? Or steal from those trying to operate a legitimate business just selling cars? Having space in a lot, and if the condition of space is there, granted. Now, if not, we can sustain and deny the motion tonight and delay it and postpone the sales tax. I think already the city of West Covina is already in a deficit problem, and that's probably why these car dealers are experiencing some of these negative responses. Is it their fault that the city wants to create receipts and raise the taxes on the taxpayers? I don't see that with the automobile industry. If you want to buy the car at a particular percentage, you buy the goddamn fucking car, period. If you don't got the cash online, you want to pull a credit and you want to pay that credit for 10 years on a piece of shit, buy the piece of shit. But you chose to sign on the dotted line. Now, going back to the lighting, some time ago when I was out here, someone vandalized my vehicle. Some fucking asshole vandalized my vehicle here in the property of West Covina. And that's why the reason the FBI are pursuing their investigation as to why that crime was committed here during a public hearing when I spoke out against the councilman for corruption, embezzlement, and deceit to misuse public funds. So you take into consideration how you plan to vote tonight for these people here tonight. They don't got time to waste. They want to run a business, and they want to get rid of all the red flag, and you can make that decision now. Don't wait for Mommy, Mommy Lopez. I know you're listening. Or what about Mr. Wu, who seems to be propping her in the back? So here are my documentations for the record. You? Good luck.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak against? Would the applicant like to come forward for a rebuttal? Before I close public hearing, this is the last opportunity for questions. Does the planning commission have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Gutierrez?
No.
Commissioner Williams?
No.
Commissioner Heng? Vice Chair Lewis? At this time, we'll be closing public hearing, and we will open discussion with Are there, Commissioner Gutierrez, would you like to discuss any thing with the commission regarding what we've heard this evening?
Yeah, sure. I think what's being presented in front of us is an act to make a decision on a matter that's been obviously vetted by our city attorney. And the city has done all it's required by law to do in public notices and the Brown Act and making sure we're in compliance and so forth in my conversation earlier with the city attorney. And what we're looking at here is multiple automotive companies in the community, from Envision Jeep Dodge Ram Chrysler, and they're not part of the association, but it's still owned by Envision. Envision Mercedes-Benz Service Department, which is not part of the association but still owned by Envision. Envision Mercedes, Envision Audi, Envision Toyota, Norvies Honda, Performance Ford, and then we have the two vacant lots. And I know based upon experience and me driving down Garvey, I have experienced sometimes those filming commercial trucks blocking access to the road there, which has, which blocks access and so forth. But in general, I hear the community. I hear everyone who's here today and everyone who's watching at home. And I think I ask the commission to make a decision based upon what the majority of what the residents want, but also the majority of the people who have given back to our community and who have established themselves in our community. So that's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
I think this evening in front of us, we are making recommendations to the city councils. We, at the end of the days, do not have, this is just a recommendation, it's not final. It's a recommendation to the city council in terms of what it is that we wish for that area. Now, as I understand it, regarding that overlay or that particular areas, it has been used for autos and the different type of uses throughout the time that it was there, the auto zone or auto mall area, plaza. So anyway, I find that it's been in use as a car. It's been in use as selling new cars or what have you, and the use hasn't changed. I don't know what the effect would be for one particular changes of the zone, but also it is my concern as well in terms of how this will proceed in the future regarding lot that may not bring incomes to the city as well. So that is a concern to me, but also at the same time, I do understand that the general area has been in use for new car dealerships, and I do have some concern. But at the end of the days, this is just a recommendation to the city council who ultimately make the policies and procedures. And yeah, I just want to add that portion. Thank you.
And I would like to make a motion. The West Covina Planning Commission adopt resolution number 21-6091 and 21-06-
Commissioner Gutierrez? I'm sorry, just one second. Chair Vice Lewis, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Madam Chair, could we let him finish the motion, and we can still continue discussion?
Sure. Proceed.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so I would like to make a motion that the planning commission adopt resolution number 21-6091 and 21-6092, recommending that the city council approve zone change number 21-01 and co-amendment number 21-01. And Commissioner Lewis has comments.
Excuse me, is there a second? And then you can still continue discussing it even with the motion and the second.
Is there a second motion? I will second the motion. Vice Chair Lewis?
So just thinking back to the last meeting as well as this meeting, and it seems to me like there seems to be a desire to sort of muddy the waters in terms of what this actually is and what this actually means to our community. One of the things that I'll say, that I want to say from my standpoint, is truly with regard to individual business owners, I don't really think that it's the responsibility of government to pick winners and losers. Having said that, though, with regard to looking at what is a legitimate planning use, I look at what's happened in this city. And for all of you who don't know, I grew up in this city. I spent the vast majority, the 35 years that I've spent on this planet, in this city. And I've seen some things occur with regard to land use and with regard to planning commissions in this city effectively go by the wayside in such a way where we are a city that is just full of, frankly, just hodgepodge development. There is really no rhyme or reason to it. And from my perspective, it's extremely disappointing. It's extremely disappointing to see what happened to Restaurant Row, which is now, for reasons I don't even understand, called The Row. It means nothing. And I look at this situation as a situation where I, quite frankly, am a bit surprised in looking back that I didn't even know until recently that there weren't specific business restrictions on these particular properties. And the thing that I'm concerned about in the long run, and governments come and go as they should, and land use determinations come and go as they should based upon the needs of the community at the time. Right now, the city of West Covina is largely dependent upon the auto plaza for a good chunk of its, for a good chunk of its sales tax revenues. And from my perspective, I don't think that it is the responsibility of the government, particularly our government, that is so dependent upon that, to eschew that and create more of a hodgepodge. And I'm disturbed by the notion that we could potentially be doing that in the future based upon the current zoning of service commercial, which allows for the development of pretty much anything at Wright. And so from my perspective, I'd much rather see this development stay, or this area stay as new car dealerships. It's one of those things where, from my perspective, I don't have any experience outside of the city of Ontario, which I can think of, in which there is a frontage lot along the freeway that has a used car dealership. And there's nowhere I can think of in the San Gabriel Valley that falls into that category. So I'm looking at it not from the perspective of either the applicant or the opposition. Frankly, at the end of the day, business owners come and go. I'm a resident here. I don't, I put people first, and I want to see our city develop in a manner that has some consistency to it. And I think that by maintaining a system where we just have nothing but a hodgepodge development policy, I'm not in favor of that. And I think for that reason, with some modifications to that, I'm in favor of having a business development overlay zone with regard to these new car dealerships. I think that, and maintaining new car dealerships in the city. I think that that is the best way forward for this city at this time. If, for whatever reason, down the line, it is shown that new car dealerships are just not a viable business option, we'll have that conversation then. But for now, I would go ahead and support this proposal solely for the purposes of maintaining the status quo. And in that regard, the only modification I would make is to section 26-737 subdivision C. I think one of the things that I would modify as it pertains to the definition being new vehicle franchise dealership, I would also say that it should include, and this is my language, and forgive me if I'm going a little off the top of my head, but I would say a manufacturer of new vehicles that markets and sells direct to consumer. I think that that should be included in that definition because, at the end of the day, I've seen real problems with how, frankly, planning commissions deal with franchise relationships. And frankly, they tend to be used by franchises for the sole purpose of self-perpetuating the new car dealership franchisee model. I'm not in that business, so I would say that we should be more wide and direct in that, or as in the business of direct sale and manufacturing of new vehicles, because models change, and we've already seen that today. So I'd like to amend that, and I would motion to adopt zone change 21-01, code amendment number 2101, with that modification to section 26 dash, give me one second, I apologize, 26-737 subdivision C.
Commissioner Lewis, may I ask for some clarification on your modification?
Certainly.
We have subsection A, which is automaker, which shall mean a company that manufactures cars. Does that cover your intended modification of C? Do we have A that directly allows automakers?
I think that the language is set forth in the permitted uses say, okay, all right, I didn't see that. I think that wasn't in the original draft in section 26-738 at the last time, and I think I had mentioned it at the last meeting.
And it could be that staff took in your comment on that. My understanding from Joanne is that she specifically wanted to include direct sales from auto manufacturers.
Okay, I think that's fair. Then I will go ahead and nix that, and I will just support the prior motion.
Do you want to?
Roll call.
Roll call? Yes, I just wanted to see if you wanted to read out and-
Okay, Madam Chair, I will do roll call. So I have a motion by Commissioner Gutierrez and a second by Chair Becerra to approve resolution 21-6091 and resolution 21-6092. Commissioner Williams?
No.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Heng? Vice Chair Lewis?
Aye.
And Chair Becerra?
Yes. This item will be scheduled for city council consideration. The city council is the final decision-making body for the code amendment and zone change. That concludes our public hearing item, and there are no-
hearing item, and there are no non-hearing items on this agenda, so we will go to Commission reports, comments, and miscellaneous items. Would any of the Commissioners like to report or comment on any item?
I don't have anything.
Sorry. Okay, I can't hear you. Okay. Paulina, are there any items to report to the Commission?
Madam Chair, the Planning Commission meeting for the September 14th, or the scheduled Planning Commission meeting for the September 14th will be canceled due to the recall election that day. And I would also like to provide you with a save the date. The city will be hosting our State of the City and Employee Recognition event on Thursday, October 14th, at 6:30 at the West Covina Sportsplex. So invitations are forthcoming, but it's a save the date.
Well, since there is no further business to consider, this meeting is adjourned at 8:56 PM.